Thank you Chair. And my fundamental objection to this application continues to be the lack of affordable housing provided on this site. And I find it surprising to hear the developers say that they believe in affordable housing, just there since they've repeatedly gone out of their way to try to avoid the responsibility for affordable housing. This committee correctly rejected the previous application for its lack of affordable housing. I don't believe that that has materially changed in this application because as has been stated by Mr. LeShen, that the site can bear 15 units and thus that affordable housing trigger should be met. And I would like to however thank the applicant for their response to questions raised at the Development Control Forum. They have gone some way to meeting some of the questions that I raised there. I would refer members to the additional papers that have been published. However, I find it really interesting that we are discussing both these space requirements being at their barest minimum and yet the lack of affordable housing on the site. If these were somewhat cramped, maybe quite small affordable units, then you could perhaps start to get your head around it, but it's quite clear that we are pushing at the boundaries of every possible opportunity that the site affords. And I don't know if that's really what this committee wants to be supporting. Finally, in summation, I wonder if we're going to get to the point where we, as long as we're happy that King's College Chapel is still upright, we can still refer to historic Cambridge. And I think that we should be looking forward to the emerging local plan and not relying on one which is dated 2006 and in the future looking as a conservation area in this area so that this committee can make decisions which are to the benefit of Cambridge and not to its detriment. Thank you.
Hills Road is one of the most impressive entrances into Cambridge, building 14 flats. It will be contrary to the 2016 local plan which sets out the city council's policies about how the demands of growth and change can be met without compromising the many properties that Cambridge such a wonderful place. If we are to feel positive and confident about the future, we need to feel that change is being properly managed and as a citizens we can influence the management process. Residents and local councils identify at least 10 respects in which this application is in conflict with the local plan. There is no case for demolishing the property, policy 5.4, baseline 4, the plant's even safe, environmental, directive, policy 3 stroke 3. The application does not respond to the local context, policy 3 stroke 4, cramped accommodation, policy 3 stroke 7. The developers have had a significant adverse impact on the amenities of the neighbouring property, providing adequate amenity space detracts from the prevailing character and appearance of the area and adversely affects trees, policy 310. A negative impact on the local setting, policy 312, damage to trees, policy 4.4, adverse effects on health and environment, policy 413, no provision of affordable housing, policy 5.5, unacceptable trust of impact, policy A2. I would pick up one which is responding to context, 3.4. Responding to context, development will be permitted, which demonstrate that they have responded to their context and drawn inspiration from the key characteristics of their surroundings to create distinctive places. Cambridge, after together York and Bath, is one of the most beautiful cities in the country, as it was in the Cambridge News yesterday, that people like to live and visit. Why do they want to live and work in Cambridge and live in Cambridge? It's because of the architecture, the history and the people. Seven million four hundred thousand visitors come to Cambridge every year. Twenty percent of Cambridge's income is from tourism. 121 Hills Road, it is an entrance, it's one of the entrances into Cambridge. When you come from London and you go, get into Hills Road, you know you have reached Cambridge. You know you have arrived. We do not want to Cambridge, to make Cambridge in a neutral place, we want to retain its beauty. And I don't want to be a prophet, but I can assure you that in 20 years' time, even still alive, I can see that if we pass this application today, all the houses along Hills Road will be knocked down and they will look ugly like this particular building we're approaching today. I believe this house can be saved. The developer can modify, commodify insights or he can sell it to a family or he can do it as a dentistry or something else, but there's no need to knock it down. As a developer has told us, he has made this decision purely on money. It was a commercial decision. He has taken, I don't believe he has taken into account the, how this development relates to the rest of the area. And I can see that it's been spoilt and I can see that his development has got a disregard, not only about the residents who live there, but I think the whole of Cambridge. Would the people of Cambridge rely on us, elected members, to look after them? So please, we are very proud of Cambridge and please support us by turning this application down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Pippas. So let's move on. The members of the committee are just to reiterate what Charlotte, the officer, has already said. So this is a new planning application. We need to bear, regardless of the four reasons for refusal, the last time round, and that refusal is material consideration for this planning application. It would be useful if members around the table took all regard to the planning legislation and the National Planning Policy Framework and in that way you can most likely with use of rhetoric and material facts argue your case at the table. Two of the councillors from the Ward who have already spoken have already talked about cramped accommodation and the failure to meet affordable accommodation requirements which are not really very useful to talk about at the table as those matters have been sort of resolved since the last planning application, although members may feel there is more to talk about than those items of course. So I don't know, the members at the table, just can you take it in?
I think this committee is entitled to compliment itself because when this similar scheme was presented to us in April, we made a number of criticisms of it, which largely have been incorporated into what I would call an improved scheme. So I think this has been a very good example of where this committee is in a position to make constructive comments about a scheme and those are willingly accommodated by the applicant. So I do say, as I say, I think compliments are in order. I'd also like to say that I think when members who are not members of this committee exercise their right to speak to the committee, if I may modestly suggest to them that if they raise matters which are quite extraneous to the application in question and to planning law, it has a counterproductive effect. It has the effect of suggesting that people are grubbing around for reasons for refusal which are not strictly legitimate. Now, one of the qualities of the new scheme that impresses me is that it proposes fewer units on a whole of larger size. So I think that you could well argue that this is as efficient a use of land as the previous application because many of the units have become correspondingly larger, which was one of the requirements in one of our criticisms. So I don't think the scheme, the new scheme can be faulted on those grounds. As for questions of noise level, well, I have to again reiterate what you have already said Chair, which is that we must be very careful about introducing new reasons for refusing this scheme. If the applicant were, as a result of refusal, to go to appeal, the appeals inspector would look very, very carefully at the original reasons we gave. He or she would look very carefully at what the applicant had done in order to accommodate those criticisms. And if the inspector felt that we had raised additional grounds at a subsequent meeting for refusal because we had not succeeded in our original grounds or because those grounds had been adequately developed by the applicant, this authority would be in serious trouble again. So I do not recommend that as a course of action. I have also been extremely impressed by how well the planning officer and you Chair have re-emphasized the question of the emerging local plan and the weight which objectors have asked us to put upon that. That plan, however far advanced it is, has not been adopted. The inspector has not pronounced it sound and until that is done, then I'm afraid we are bound by the existing local plan of 2006. Chair, I see absolutely no reason at all for rejecting this application and I shall decidedly vote for it.
Well, I wasn't on this committee when the previous application was presented and refused, but I have looked very carefully at what is here now in front of us and I have made a few references back to the previous scheme. And I've got a few points that I would like to make and then I have some questions too. So I'd like to start with the reason for refusal which was to provide adequate arrangements for visitor parking. Well, I've looked very carefully at how visitors will come in and access the basement and I have a few points. One is that the ramp down to the car park is one in 10, which is the minimum, the maximum gradient for cars. So this is at the maximum gradient, but from the information that I, available to do with heights and levels, which I've had to root around to find, the drop from ground level to the basement is 2.5 metres, therefore the ramp distance must be 25 metres. From the site plan and using the scale, the existing ramp is only 13 metres and therefore it's half the distance that is required for a one in 10 ramp. So I don't believe that the ramp can be made steeper and I don't feel that the, a longer ramp can be accommodated on this site. So I think that's very problematic. I think the access is severely restricted down to the basement and it's just not working. The other thing is if you, in the car park also, there is a, I haven't got the plan up yet, there is, yes, I think there is one space opposite the lift lobby which has very restricted, that concerns about how that space would work and I don't feel it's very good to reverse into or get out of that space directly opposite the lift lobby. I've also looked very carefully at access for disabled visitors because that is a requirement that disabled visitors must be able to access all properties. And from the basement, there is a very small lobby going into the lift lobby and that is an impossibly small space for a wheelchair user to go through, it just won't work. Neither will the lobby in front of the lift, it's too small for a wheelchair user. And a wheelchair user going to the flat one is inaccessible for a wheelchair user. If flat one is designated for wheelchair users and that's what it states, the access into that flat is completely inadequate. A wheelchair user needs a 1.5 metre turning circle and you can't actually turn to get into the flat through the front door and to shut the door. That's one of my points about the, I do feel that the adequate access arrangements for visitors has been provided. For cramped accommodation, I see that the, basically all of the minimum space standards have been there, those are for able-bodied people. Flat one is for a wheelchair user and they require more space. So there are standards for wheelchair users, there's a British standard, there's lifetime homes, there's housing incorporation, design equality standards and several other design and access guides. And they say that for a combined living kitchen dining room space for a wheelchair, you require 25 square metres, while this scheme provides about 19 square metres and I feel it's therefore six metres below the minimum requirement for a wheelchair user and I believe that accommodation is severely cramped and completely inappropriate for a wheelchair user. I'd also like to consider the affordable housing and I have a question and that is the revised, National Planning Policy Framework was revised and made current on the 23rd of July and from that date it was implemented. The government stated that that is fully implemented from that date, but could you explain what provision that has for a minimum requirement of 10 as being the starting point for affordable housing, if you could? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobbro. Can you answer this question? Yes, thanks, Professor Hittkin.
Yes, thank you Chair. In many respects, this is quite a complex proposal. I'm going to take the other end of the periscope, as it were, from councillor Fromborough, looking at the bigger picture. First of all, a lot of emotion is bound up with the appearance and that's always the case, but I think it's really acute in this case. People have spoken about preserving the character of the Hills Road and the implication always is that able-bodied buildings by their very nature are desirable and must be retained. I have to say that I find this particular building particularly ponderous, particularly unattractive with its elements of towers and pieces which seem to have been put together in a sort of Legoland kind of way. So I think the present house is definitely, does not add to the quality of Hills Road. It really has only come to my attention since this proposal was put forward because the density of tree coverage, the last stops of the year hides it, and I would say hides it fortunately. Well, the proposal, it seems to me, has things to be said for it. If you go around Cambridge, go to Clay Farm, go to Eddington, go to Nine Wells, there is this emerging local style of building. I think Cambridge, perhaps thanks to the efforts that everybody makes, is working to a higher standard than many parts of the country. And so I think we ought to be much more open-minded towards the quality of building that is going up in Cambridge and I regard this particular proposal as well within the spirit of Eddington and Clay Farm, which have deservedly received a lot of praise. So I think that we should really try and look at the bigger picture. Another aspect of this is, I don't believe the present house is suitable for conversion to a single family or anything. I think people have moved on from that, but there is, we are talking about a site which is near Addenbrooks where there is huge demand on the part of single professionals or couples and property developments like this seems to me to be very desirable. It is on highly well-served transport, public transport, easy cycling. So I think the arguments that it is not the right building for this site failed to convince me. So given that the developer has modified in the light of the previous application presentation, the provision of cycling spaces, it seems to me greatly improved, car parking will always be an issue and the policy of this city is to reduce car parking and the use of cars and I think we should go with that spirit. I also think that having 14 slightly larger flats is a step in the right direction and overall, I spoke to councillor Hittkin saying this is a proposal that should be allowed to go ahead.
Thank you, Professor Hittkin. No more comments from the table. So thank you, thanks for what you said so far. I think you've been very good with comments. I just wanted to add a couple of other things. So as the Dobbros already alluded to, the National Planning Policy Framework document and the use of the number 10 as a cutoff for affordable housing, I think as she did, I would like an officer to just be clear about that, about how we will use that in this meeting. Excuse me, because I think there has been some misunderstanding about how to interpret that figure. I'd also ask that perhaps the officer could speak about the question of 69 descalves that was raised by local residents as being the noise level outside on the road, I guess, or at the edge of the property. There was one other question which came up earlier, not in this meeting, about a pavement for people to walk on as opposed to walking in the road and the access to the building. I believe there isn't a pavement at the moment. And just to reiterate really what Professor Dobbros, I'm very concerned here about the ramp having to go to one in five, the lack of access, as she said, sorry to repeat myself, but it is concerning and also the very cramped nature of flat one for a disabled user. Is anyone else still trying to think what to ask, or else I guess the officer? Okay, so if you've got questions, I'll take Charlotte's here.
Thank you Chair. Firstly, on the access arrangements into the basement, the Highways Authority has not raised concern about the quality or the safety of the access to the ramp. So I didn't have any grounds to take a different view. I think that's a point for the, that's relevant during construction and during the management and use of the basement, but certainly in relation to the reason for refusal, in terms of the visitor car parking, there is a surface level visitor space which has been provided and in my opinion that overcomes the previous reason for refusal. So accessibility to the visitor car parking spaces within the basement is kind of overcome by the presence of the ground level space. In terms of the access issues that you've raised, the access officer has been consulted on the application and it has also been presented to the disability panel as well and their comments are provided in my report. But in summary, and I'll just highlight their comments, which said that this is an encouraging scheme of this scale, as large developments often fail to meet appropriate standards. They have said that further consideration could be given to the design of the accessible units, such as the quality of the bathroom space, the style of the door and the relationship to the bedroom and the bathroom, which would ultimately be all the suite, but those are all matters that I consider could be part of the detailed design and would be in terms of meeting other legislation. That would be sort of the, the applicant would deal with later on in the process, but certainly they did not raise any concerns to me during consultation on that. In terms of the concerns about the noise levels that we experience by the future occupants, the environmental health team has assessed this impact and has advised that mechanical ventilation would be exceptional. Certainly that's an arrangement that is common throughout the city and has recommended that a mechanical ventilation system is secured through conditions as well as noise insulation for balconies. So I take their advice on this matter and they're satisfied that this can be addressed through conditions. That's why I have no reason to take another, come to a different conclusion on that. And I think that was all of the questions and Nigel will come up with the affordable housing.
Thank you Chair. Just to clarify that the NPPF, that paragraph 63, is telling us when we should not seek affordable housing. So schemes that are not major development should not seek affordable housing and that's to bring that in line with government guidance which came in several months ago, that essentially says the same thing. It does go on to say that major development should require 10% affordable housing and this is a very specific point about ownership. We have not attached any weight to this. We, our recommendations are based on the development plan as it is and the policy and threshold in that development plan. So I hope that solves the question.
Thank you very much for that. I'd like to come back on to those things if I may. So firstly, on the access for the, you know, the question about the ramp. So there's been a question in general about the planning committee meetings about decisions we make which then the building control have to then deal with and decisions we make can affect the quality of decisions they can make. So if we make a decision today to approve this scheme and it turns out that the ramp does need to be one in five per chance to make it work, does that mean that building control would then have to agree to that even though the minimum is one in 10? Conversely, if the minimum is one in 10, can we reasonably condition it and say that there's a condition that says the ramp has to be one in 10 at this meeting before we approve that? That's my first question. And the second question, a smaller thing, is just can we condition the installation of a pavement for pedestrians to access as opposed to having to walk on the road, which I believe they have to do at the moment, is a shared space provision? Any other questions as a result of what's been said so far? Thank you, if you could ask those two things. So just my chat in, there was one third thing actually, it's just in terms of these reasons for refusal, I mean, if, I mean, if one flat, flat one, has what we regard as cramped accommodation, does that mean that they have not answered that question or is that a matter of degree? As it's, I understand that the argument for cramped accommodation for disabled people And also the very cramped nature of flat one for a disabled user. Now, does anyone else still have anything you want to ask? Otherwise, I'll go to the officer. Okay, so if you can get a question, I'll please, Charlotte, please.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, on the access arrangements into the basement, the Highways Authority has not raised concern about the convenience or the safety of the access to the ramp. So I didn't have any grounds to take a different view. I think that's a point for the... That's relevant during the construction and during the management and use of the basement. But certainly in relation to the reason for refusal in terms of visitor car parking, there is a surface-level visitor space which has been provided. And in my opinion, that overcomes the previous reason for refusal. So accessibility to the visitor car parking spaces within the basement is kind of overcome by the presence of the ground-level space. In terms of the access issues that you've raised, the access officer has been consulted on the application, and it has also been presented to the disability panel as well. And their comments are provided in my report. But in summary, and I'll just highlight their comments, which said that this is an encouraging scheme of this scale, as larger developments often fail to meet appropriate standards. They have said that further consideration could be given to the design of the accessible unit, such as the quality of the bathroom space, the style of the door, and the relationship to the bedroom and the bathroom, which would ultimately be all the suite. But those are all matters that I consider could be part of the detailed design and in terms of meeting other legislation. That would be the... The applicant would deal with later on the process. But certainly, they did not raise any concerns to me during consultation on that. In terms of the concerns about the noise levels that are experienced by the future occupants, the environmental health team has assessed this impact and has advised that mechanical ventilation would be acceptable. And certainly, that's an arrangement that is common throughout the city and has recommended that a mechanical ventilation system is secured through conditions as well as noise insulation for balconies. So I take their advice on this matter, and they're satisfied that this can be addressed through conditions. That's why I have no reason to take another... Come to a different conclusion on that. And I think that was all of the questions. And Nigel will come up with the affordable housing. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify that the NPPF at paragraph 63 is telling us when we should not seek affordable housing. So schemes that are not major developments should not seek affordable housing. And that's to bring that in line with government guidance, which Henry said a month ago, that essentially says the same thing. It does go on to say that major developments should require 10% affordable housing, and this is a very specific point about ownership. We have not attached any weight to this. We... Our recommendation is based on the development plan as it is and the policy and threshold in that development plan. So I hope that sums up the question.
Thank you very much for that. I'd like to come back on to those things, if I may. So firstly, on the access for the... Pushing back the ramp. So there's been a question in general about planning committee meetings, about decisions we make, which then the control have to then deal with, and decisions we make can affect the quality of decisions they can make. So if we make a decision today to approve this scheme, and it turns out that the ramp does need to be one in five, perchance, to make it work, does that mean that building control would then have to agree to that, even though the minimum is one in ten? Conversely, if the minimum is one in ten, can we reasonably condition it and say that there's a condition that says the ramp has to be one in ten at this meeting before we approve that? That's my first question. And the second question, a smaller thing, is just can we condition the installation of a pavement for pedestrians to access as opposed to having to walk on the road, which I believe they have to do at the moment, is a shared space provision? Any other questions as a result of what's been said so far? Thank you if you'd just ask those two things. So just my chat in, there was one third thing, actually. In terms of these reasons for refusal, I mean, if, I mean, if one flat, flat one, has what we regard as cramped accommodation, does that mean that they have not answered that question? Or is that a matter of degree? I understand that the argument for cramped accommodation for the disabled unit is not so strong, because it's referring to several measures of size of accommodation and not the technical housing standards, which is a strong document and a material point of consideration. However, I think this committee, and I certainly consider the needs of disabled people to be very important too. And if the accommodation for a disabled person is not sufficient, then does that mean that that reason for refusal has not been met? Chair. Sorry, Pastor Thunberg.
Can you also clarify giving weight to the proposed local plan 2014? Because my understanding is that it's a... Well, we know it's a very long process to get a local plan consulted, modified, inspected, and then finally adopted. My understanding is that depending on where in the process we have reached, we can consider the amount of weight given to it. So at the beginning of the process, or before there is a proposed submission, it's very little weight. But as you get, as the consultation goes through and things are modified, and then final proposals go to the inspector, you can increase the weight that's given. But we're aware that this is not adopted, but I believe that we can give some substantial weight to the proposed plan.
Thank you, Pastor Thunberg. So coming up, the service... Oh, sorry, Pastor Blake.
No, he might say the same thing as me.
Sorry, Pastor Blake, can you...
No, I was going to respond to a point I just raised, but that's a clarification. I accept that they also may do that.
You stand? Hugh, can I say something, please?
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the weight of the potential local plan, yes, when the plan is originally first proposed, you attach a little weight to it, then it goes through a consultation exercise, and then you have to have regard to how many objections there are to various policies, and then what weight you then attach to them. And then it goes through a process of examination. Where we are at the moment is that time has passed, but nothing has really changed. The policy is still... The tax policy is still in the 2006 local plan. And until the inspector's report is published, we can still give little weight to policies that have received objections. So we are at the stage where we're waiting for the inspector's report. And at that point, then we can give substantial weight to the policies. But as of now, we cannot attach significant weight to policies that have received objections, which is the case here. Can I just ask a question as well about the ramp? The ramp is a building control matter. If the scheme is incorrect and will not meet building regs, then it could not be built, and it would have to come back in some form with an amendment, which may end up back at this committee. But it would have to be considered to the planning process if there are significant changes are required. But it is a building control matter. And I feel that we can leave that matter to building control.
Yeah, Charlotte.
Thank you, Chair. Just to come back on your questions regarding the access. Just to the location plan. There is no pedestrian and cyber access from Hills Road, but there is no separate pedestrian access from a community's way. The access officer has advised me that for the scale of development and the intensity of use of the access, it's likely that a shared arrangement would be acceptable. However, if members considered that a separate access would be desirable, then I consider that as something that could be dealt with under a landscaping condition. And that I'd recommend it. And in terms of the floor space of unit one, which is the accessible unit, I would advise you that the disability panel and the access officer, a member of them, have raised an issue with the size of that unit. And they did advise me that in response to the concern about size, the building only needs to meet code one building regulations as the development is less than 15. So that the access officer can only advise in terms of the kitchen or something. So my understanding is that due to the size of the development, some of the requirements in terms of access may differ from to larger developments. But I advise you that this actually hasn't been raised by the access officer or disability panel. Thanks.
If I may ask this one third question. So Nigel, you said that, sorry, Officer Nigel Baiki, that if the ramp didn't work, it could come back to this committee. But is that your understanding of what would happen? Or would it be a non-material, what's called a, you know, when you change something, it just goes to the chair and the vice chair by email for the change? Which do you think it would be?
I can't really answer that without knowing the degree of change that would be required. If it was a very minor change, it could be dealt with as an unmaterial amendment. If it required a new application because we felt that it was a significant change that was required. For example, that a basement doesn't work and you need to come back with a completely different approach, then it would likely be a new planning application. So it would depend on the degree of change. But the point I was making is that if a change is necessary as a result of building regulations, then that is likely to be controlled through planning processes.
I think we've had a good debate on this item, so if councillors consider their votes, so the recommendation from the officer is one of approval. Are those councillors in favour of that recommendation? Four, Chair. And those against? Three, Chair. Any objections? Thank you very much.